Welcome everyone to the Tuesday, July 14th, Parksville City Council Meeting. If you would, if you'd like to join us in our invocation and prayer, I ask that you realize at this time, and have Councilman McGee, the leader of the prayer.
Honest Pastor, dear heavenly Father, thank you for each and every person here tonight, for each and every family that they represent. Help us as we come together to do the business of this city, as everything we think, say, and do might be for their glory, it might be for the benefit of the citizens of Parksville. Keep with us in all of our decisions. Help us to have ears to hear, and to do, be very best possible for this city as we address the things on this agenda tonight. Jesus, thank you.
Amen. Our plan for the year is to the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, please take seats. Item four is Presentations. I think Mr. Ricky Fink, is Ricky here?
Not yet.
Ricky is not here. If he comes in, we'll kind of go back to him at that time. Item four B is Parkville Drainage Study. Carol Harker with H, or excuse me, with Ariel Wells.
All right, now we'll stay here and take a last call. Here, I'm actually David Rangies with Yale Robinson. Carol is one of our projects, and she'll continue with us today. Just to give you a short little overview of what we're doing, for those of you who may not be familiar, we were selected to assist the city. We've got a very good amount of experience in Parksville, worked for a number of years with Donovan County and with Sanoco on some of their flooding issues. And so, we've done FEMA flood studies in the area. Both Carol and I have worked for FEMA as contractors for nearly 20 years, and we also understand sort of how this grant is. What you have is a Cyclonic Emergency Management Grant through FEMA that funds basically ways to avoid flooding in communities or in areas that have been impacted before. FEMA, a while back, decided that we're spending all this money on damaged buildings, all this money's on damaged bridges, all this money on damaged dams, let's spend some money ahead of time to try not to spend the money at the end. And that's their goal, and that's the goal of your project, is to look through that. So the task we're to do is we're surveying, and we're out surveying, but ground surveys, David has been with me here, he's the gentleman who's having to do all the hard work in the rain and the heat while we sit in the office, asking when they'll finish. We're doing a modeling and analysis, so we're using some high-level modeling to sort of determine what is happening, flow rise, and we'll talk in a minute about why that's important. And then ultimately, when we get finished with this, we'll design some type of improvements. We're still in the survey modeling phase right now, so we don't have answers to what the problems are, but we're starting to see some things come up, and we've got a little bit of information for that. And then finally, we'll take you all to do permitting, so at the end of the day, you'll have solutions to some of your problems. The goal, as I mentioned, is to identify vulnerable assets, public and private, both are just as important. We have selected areas, so we're not looking at the whole city, and that's, I know a lot of people are going to wonder, you know, why did we pick this, why did we pick this? Russ and I were talking exactly why it got picked, and we're not exactly sure, some of you may have been on council and have a better feel for why these were picked. Certainly, these are areas that have experienced problems before, we can see evidence of that, and so I think it would pick logically in these areas that have the highest risks, and that's really what you're likely to have. The buzzword is resiliency. You may have heard that word, and the idea is, is to make communities resilient to avoid flooding. One of the most important things we have to do is that all projects must be net positive in terms of cost benefit analysis. That means that for every dollar spent, at least a dollar has to be protected. Now, that's not just a cash equation. It also includes certain things like loss of potential loss of life, loss of property, economic input, staff time, impacts to communities that have been impacted before, impacted minority communities, low impact, low to moderate incomes. So it's not just a dollar for dollar, but FEMA has, like any federal government agency has a very specific way they want you to do it, and a very long analysis. We're very familiar with that. At the end of the day, if we recommend something that costs X amount of dollars, that can't protect X minus two, it has to protect that much. And that's going to be important, because we may identify some things we think are important, but it doesn't fit into that cash model. And that's going to be an important distinction, both for the council to know, staff to know, and for the community to know. The project area, you can see the project areas, overall areas listed on the left, and you can see those areas, I know it's a little small in those areas, but basically, we term these as, this is our terminology, it may not be the terminology that you guys are familiar with, it's the Fourth Street Ditch, the Ninth Street Ditch, and the Marion Avenue Ditch. What you can see in red are the areas of those ditches, pipes, swales, that run in and along those roads. That's what's being surveyed, that's what's being focused on in terms of how we're improving those. And I'll let you sort of digest that for a second, if there's any particular questions on that, I'd be happy to answer that type. Where they're located, what the study is.
Now, Marion Avenue Ditch, does that run parallel to Marion Avenue into the Ninth Street Ditch, or?
Yeah, both the, both of those ditches virtually run to Snake Branch. None of these ditches are FEMA studied streams, that's a positive, meaning that you don't have to go through Clough Mars and Lomars. Ultimately, they all do attach to Snake Branch, but. And David, if you want, if I'm missing any of those, that's incorrect, tell me, especially. He's had twelve through them, much more than I have, so.
I have a question. Here's a ditch that runs, it comes in at Marion Avenue, and I'm not know, I don't know where the other end goes to, but it's on Marion Avenue, and it books property on East Chaplin Circle and Bubba Street. Have you done anything in?
Yeah, I believe that is one of our areas, is that correct? Yeah, we've run up, yeah, yeah. That's one of the study, and I know it's a very small one here, but that's one of the ditches that we're expecting reviewing, any additions. Even if one of these ditches, let's say for example, a ditch here, that's one of our study ditches, and there's a ditch that connects to it, doesn't mean we ignore everything that comes to it, but what we're trying to do is focus on the bigger trunk ditches that will lead some of the smaller ditches. And some of the smaller ditches, you know, once we determine this, you know, city forces like that, we can clean half the different, that's not a problem. But some of these larger ditches, you often, some of these ditches, they're over your head, you just can't get into them with normal equipment, it's going to take a lot more effort.
Yeah, that would be Ninth Street Ditch.
Yes, yes. And that ditch is an impressive mixture, so.
And the reason I'm bringing that up is because property owners on East Chaplin Circle, Hepcog, and as well as on Bubba Street, were concerned about snakes.
Okay.
And having to kill snakes in their yard. And the ditch was full to the brim, running over with all the extensive rain that we had, you know, they just don't have any relief, so if there's anything that can be done in the meantime.
Well, you know, one of the advantages of all those snakes, is not one of the things we're particularly looking at, one of the problems you get, you have some reverse flows, you have some blockages in your ditches, vegetation, debris, and so we're going to remove that to move the water. That will remove some of the standing water, and that will remove some of the vegetation will help that, it won't prevent it. You know, we don't want to tell anybody we're going to be safe after it and run all the snakes out, but it'll certainly help, it'll certainly help.
Now, would this be like a one-time deal, because things are blocked now, and you clean them out, you know, over time, they'll become blocked again?
Yeah, this grant is a one-time grant, and it does not cover maintenance, it's a capital project, construction project. The idea is to make it, one of the problems is growing up so much that you can't get in economically, quickly maintain it. Once it's clean, it will be wider, easier to get into, and then we'll have the staff and workers and maintenance brands do it. One of the things people want to expect you to do is don't spend the money and then forget about it, once you've probably made it. Because like I said, it'll come again, and it may take 20, 30 years for it to come again. None of us here will probably be here by our total, we have to worry about it, so we're certainly not going to make sure we don't tax this down, in a direction.
And I think there's some education pieces that citizens aren't aware of, for instance, tires in the ditch. If you have your tires changed at Walmart, you have to pay a disposal fee, and when people change their tires at home, I don't think they actually know, and I spoke with the city manager about this, about letting them know that they can take four tires per licensed driver to the landfill for free. And, and just that education, that'd be one element that could be stopped, that can make a major difference.
Yeah, definitely. There's a couple of things that we're going to recommend, and we've already talked about them, that are non-cost items, that's one of them. There's some other non-cost items that we can talk about.
Thank you.
One of the things we've done, unfortunately, COVID hit just as we were beginning, so we've had to rearrange how we wanted to do this. What we've done is we've sent out surveys to the subject parties. Now, these are not citywide surveys, these are surveys to addresses that are in this study area. 4,075 surveys were sent out attached to the water, that was kind of easy, that's just way to get it out. Some of them turned back in by paper, some of them went to an online, red face system. We had nine questions, try not to overwhelm them with questions, if you put out a survey of 45 questions, nobody responded to it, one question wouldn't be enough. We asked about flooding, type of flooding, frequencies, basically inquiries about what documentation they have, and then talked about some ways you can fix that. We had 199 surveys come back, which is 4.9%. That's reasonably low, you know, our accepted confidence rating one had at least 5%, you'd really like to have 10%. But I will point out, we're not surveying, like you would a presidential survey, or what does a community feel about something, we're surveying its information back. So even if 10 people gave us information back, it would have some value. So don't want to get hung up on just the numbers who responded. Just to give you some of the results, 49% who answered that they were impacted by flooding, and that's, you know, these are people who we thought would be impacted, so that's unexpected. Of those who were impacted, 85% experienced three or more flooding events a year. And everyone's idea of what flood is a little different. As an engineer, I had sort of statistical flood. As a homeowner, he gets anywhere in your yard, that's a flood. So what it does indicate though, is that you're not seeing big storm impacts only, you're also seeing sort of that nuisance play, that afternoon thunderstorm, and so that indicates a lot of the collector areas are causing some problems, or the big trunk lines are not letting the water get to them. Those of you, and this is not unexpected, but those who own their own homes were more concerned, fewer owned a home, 68% indicated that they were bottoming or greatly concerned. And the people who responded, there was a high percentage of ownership, 82% of the people who responded owned their own homes. So basically, if you ever got caught with flooding, greatly concerned, if you reported that you were flooding, 92% reported that they were worried about getting flooded. So once it happens to you one time, that's going to be number one on your mind. And that's, that's what we expected, and just, you know, looking to confirm. This is important to us, 65% respondents indicated they knew of choke points, and 35% had photos they could share. We have not yet reached out to them, but we've just finished our surveys, and we're going to reach out to them. Even if five had said they had some knowledge, that would have been great. Now, all 65 aren't going to tell us correct choke points, we know that, you know, they're going to tell us, hey, this is a choke point, we're going to take a look at it, you know, it's not really a choke point, but at least it gives us some indications of places in the community that has some issues, and we'll be able to kind of hone in and use our own experience. Also, something that was interesting to me, 45% of respondents were 65 years or older, meaning that these communities are much older communities, have less sort of physical ability to deal with flooding, less ability to clean up once a flood comes, and so that's an important piece of the pie. Also, you know, for whatever reason, if, you know, they have more time or more interest, then they're going to respond. Younger people, children, maybe they'll respond sometimes. We put out some potential remediations, things that people can do for themselves to help reduce flooding. We're talking about rain barrels, and those are basically coming off a roof, you catch a trace of water, that's a very economical, cheap way to do it. Got some lukewarm response about that. Additional grassing and vegetation was very popular, and so some educational discussions about how you can add more round cover. One good thing about this area is there's lots of tree cover. Or a bad thing is there's lots of tree cover, which means there's not as much grass that has an opportunity to grow. When that happens, the rain hits the hard path, hits the soil, doesn't have a chance to soak in, it runs off very quickly, gets to the truck lines faster. If we can slow that time down, have it absorb a little bit more, that's going to make it a lot better for some of the communities, so that's something we're going to talk about. And then half of the respondents are interested in hearing more and attending an informational meeting, when we finally get the opportunity to do that at some point.
Now, would rain barrels and grass be available to residents as part of this grant?
Yeah, that, yes, yes, we, you know, one of the things you could do in grant, you could make rain barrels about, not very expensive, and so you could have a program where you buy 100 rain barrels, 200 rain barrels, and they can be available. You could also make grass seed available, so there's, that can be funded under this program. And FEMA actually prefers to spend some money on those type of things than just pipes and wet dishes. You got to be, that's not going to solve the problem, but I do appreciate that. With that, I'll entertain any more questions anyone might have.
Here, here is another area. It's right at the very southern end of the city, where you come in by the old radio station. It's Fifth Street, where Fifth Street comes into Sixth Street, there is a ditch that runs there. And several years ago, I got a call from a resident, had to sump pump her yard two streets over into that ditch. It was jet bad, and then the water went into that ditch again, and nothing happened. So as a result of studying that, we found out that it had never been tiled before. So have you found, and they, DOT came in and tiled this big ditch on the most southern portion of town. Have you found any areas that are not tiled?
Explain to me what you mean by tiled.
The word big cement pipe.
Okay, got you. Yeah, I mean, most of the ditches we found are natural ditches there, well, they were cut in and made, but they've become natural, things have grown in them, and so what you're talking about is a solution, it's an expensive solution. And so, one of the things we're going to have to do is look at how we can get the biggest batting for the butt. The biggest batting for the butt for us right now is cleaning the ditches, get the debris out, get the trees out, that's the cheapest, fastest, quickest idea you can do. We're going to evaluate, secondly, certain type of turfing, that are basically hydroseeds, but there's certain mixtures that grow really well, and they handle velocity very well. Then the next level up is what you talk about, tiling or concrete. There's also different types of matings, like synthetic matings, like polyethylene, and certain fiber matting that you can do. The last thing, the most expensive, is piping. You know, if you're talking about piping, you're talking about, you know, thousands a feet, you're looking at half a million to a million type of expenditures. So that's, that's where we're going to have challenges, and that we're going to get expensive really fast, because you have a lot of ditches. And so that's an important element that we got to take a look at, and we're going to look at all solutions, price all solutions, and then we'll sit down and go, okay, this is, this is what the grant of cover, here's how much we can afford, here's how much we can do, here's the biggest bang for the buck. It won't, at the end of the day, every flooding problem will not be solved by this project. There's just too much city, too much ditch, too much area, but we're going to solve as much as we can, the part that we have available.
And how much funds do we have?
Um, Rusty, you know the exact, no, construction, I know how much, yes.
So, once the study has been approved by council, it goes to S C E M D. They have to review it and approve it, and then we make application for the big grants, and it can be in phases.
So, you know, to answer your question, it could be millions, it could be hundreds of thousands, a lot of it depends on who else is doing this, and how good a job you do in this part of it helps you in the next part. You know, if you just say, I have like a billion dollars, do some drainage stuff, it's like my, and he looks at it and goes, wow, you can have like studied it, and if you've done a very detailed analysis, comfortable that you're going to spend the money correctly, and have a good cost benefit, you're more apt to get more construction dollars.
When you get through with the survey, will the information you have give you any idea about the impact, the positive impact that it could have on areas not impacted by this study? I mean, we have an elevation change here in town, where all of us down by the lake, it's just a constant flood, and we have different issues there than we do upstairs, but we'll make sure that what we do here doesn't negatively impact us, and it would be nice if there would be some positive impact of keeping some water here from coming down.
Flooding, there's two things in effect, like there's timing, and there's the amount of water that falls. Nothing we can do with the amount of water that falls, it's just the way nature puts it down. The timing we can impact, and if we, for example, some of the communities that are on the top of the basin, the head of the basin, if they have quick runoff, because they don't have vegetation, or if they have quick runoff, because it's very dense, a lot of houses together, that's going to get the water in the ditch, get it down faster. If we can slow that down, then more water can come through over a longer period of time, and the flooding, while the ditch may be full longer, it doesn't overflow the top. We have to be careful with our time to go, hold everybody back, it's like, you know, I'll use Trent, you know, going to work, for example. Everybody goes at eight o'clock, the roads get packed. But if everybody goes at seven o'clock, it's still going to be packed. What we need is someone at seven, at 17, at 7:20, at 7:45, at eight, at eight thirty. And that's our challenge, is to how do we balance this timing, so that we don't overflow or overburden some of these ditches downstream. And ultimately, two of these go into Snake Creek, which goes into the basins you're talking about, so more than can be done up top can improve areas downstream, even though you 're not in those areas. And so we'll, I think you and I talked about that earlier, and Russ and I talked about it just a few minutes ago, so we'll, in within the confines of what we're allowed to do, we'll look as much at that as you do.
Any other questions, in council? Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Item five on the agenda, on this one, item from the city manager.
Yes, sir, thank you. Just one item to, I'll take you by the council on, as you might have been aware, the free mask distribution that we received from Sanoco, Byerly, and Tayloron Pines, we received 10,000 versus 15,000 masks earlier than expected, and we are excited that we were able to get those out fast. We had planned on getting disposable masks out, but because we got to 10,000 reusable cloth masks, we are beginning to distribute those. We had hoped to do a distribution at T V Thomas first, and then Pride Park the next day. Unfortunately, due to scheduling with our officers, we need to have traffic control in Pride Park, because it's on a major, on Sixth Streets, and there's not really a lot of room in Cars and Park and Sage, so we decided to do two, locate, two days at T V Thomas, and then we'll do Pride Park the next week, in addition to other locations once we determine how much mass we have left and immediately. We're going to continue this as we get to 5,000 masks as well, and as the pot is lax. Eventually, we will just start going out, with our different, whatever we have means possible, such as with our officers having masks in the cars to hand out, giving residents masks. The goal is to hand out two masks per person, per resident, as many as we can touch, five per household, we can get the masks from that way as well, and to hand them out till they're gone. These are not masks that we pay for, they're for the citizens, and we want to get them out to the citizens as fast as possible. We also have the census, we have the drive-through event coming up, Saturday, July 18th, from noon to three, the branch of N C double A C P, Census 2020, Drive Through Cow events, Saturday, July 18th, 12 to noon, at the Public Community Center. So that's something else that you need to make your residents aware of. But at the census, again, we want to make sure we have accurate numbers, that's so important for anything that we do, economic development laws, because we need accurate numbers to show how many citizens are in Parksville, and how we actually are impacted by anything that we do. So those are just two items for you guys.
Thank you, manager, may I?
Yes, of course.
Several people have asked, since we as a council passed a resolution encouraging people to have masks, might we as the city have some signage that we would put in different places, public places, to just reinforce that message, is that a possibility?
That's absolutely possible. We are going to be alongside this mask distribution, we also will be doing information handouts, posts on our Facebook sites, our website, but certainly, we can look at doing some sort of distribution in forms of flyers and can have to businesses, just to educate people, hey, how to wear a mask, not like I'm doing right now, and then, then other ways to protect yourselves from it, not just masks, but social distancing, things like that. So that's absolutely possible, and I'll actually have one maker of direct force and fully professional do that. That's a great idea.
Tomorrow and Thursday, will it be a drive-through site?
Yes, ma'am, T V Thomas has, as you know, that drive-through area, you can drive through, that's all the dollars in Pride location, to catch the first round of mask distribution. I have the times for you, I forgot to mention. The first time, July 15th, is 7:00 a.m. to noon, so people come before work and before noon, to get masks, and then July 16th is going to be noon to six, to catch the afternoon crowd. So it will be completely drive-through, we're going to have our officers and firefighters on site to use the community outreach as well. So those masks, we hand again, two per person, or five per household, if you can. We're not asking to approve your resident, we just want the courage of residents coming, and we want to get these out to everybody who's here.
Want to thank our sponsors, Caroline Pines and Sanoco for doing that.
Absolutely, Caroline Pines was the first one, and then Sanoco and Byerly jumped on it, and they truly are trying to help the community, and we cannot give enough thanks and praise for them to do that. That was completely unexpected, and we appreciate it very much, they really are trying to get the word of masks to help save lives.
I actually saw the news where the infectious disease control person at Caroline Pines gave the interview, and she was thankful for the city partnering with them on different projects, and that she thought that was a great way to give back to the community.
I think that this, this is a great way to work together, and to ensure that we can all handle it together, if no one is immune to it, no one is suffering from it, and if we can partner with as many people as possible, then we will.
All right, thank you. Consider the agenda, receive the information without objection. Let me finish, business, item six, Sharon, do we need to call a virus at this time? Your council on, phone, your speakerphone.
Do you want to, we're going to have one more item I wanted to do, I want to introduce a new hire, we have, is it Sharon, that's a fun person. I knew it was Sylvester. I'd like to introduce Sylvester Wallace, this is our new H R director. Sylvester, if you might stand up right there. We're very proud of Sylvester, he's my first hire, so I'm extra proud of him.
Sharon, do we need to call Lawrence at this time? Your council on, on your speaker phone.
Johnny, one more, Johnny, I have one more item I wanted to do. I wanted to introduce a new hire. We have, Sharon, that's a fun one. I knew it was Sylvester. I'd like to introduce Sylvester Wallace. This is our new H R director. Sylvester, if you might stand up right there. Well, we're proud of Sylvester. He's my first hire, so I'm extra proud of him. But he was a standout amongst all of our applicants. He had some stiff competition, but he truly did stand out, and we're very excited to have him aboard. He already is making great strides, and I believe he'll be a tremendous asset for the team. And so, Sylvester, if you'd like to safety watch, you're welcome to. Just back to the park, city parks. Good deal. Sweet.
Hello. Hey, all right, we're good.
Okay, good, good. All right, item six, unfinished business, I'll ask the city manager to read the item's presentation, please.
This is ordinance forty-three ninety-three. This is authorizing the city parcel of South Carolina's entry into an installment purchase transaction to make certain improvements to City Hall and to refinance a series of bonds issued to defray the costs of the acquisition, renovation and improvement of City Hall and Pavilion at Martin Park, and that certain other bonds and capital leases of the city. Authorizing execution delivery of various options related to such transaction, including the base lease agreement and installment purchase and use agreement, approving the use of certain money of the city, approving the issuance of bonds by the city parcel of facilities corporation, delegating authority to the mayor and city manager to effect such transaction, and determine certain matters and other matters that are just related to it.
Okay, thank you, law. As part of this, we've got our council Lawrence Flynn on the phone. Lawrence, this is Johnny Andrews, Mayor Protown, are you with us?
Hey, Johnny.
Okay, maybe you can give us a run-through before we take motions and discussion of this ordinance.
Certainly. So the item that we have in front of you tonight is a slightly revised version of what you gave on the, I think, it's actually a little more substantive provision to version of this order that you adopted at first reading back in June.
Okay.
She is proposed, is pro-
All right, you can hear you.
I had the last couple of sentences.
Okay. Yeah, let me, let me.
Still broken up? Okay. Well, nevertheless, it's unfinished business, it's the same thing we did in June, I just wanted to make sure everybody understood what we were all there. Okay, is there a motion on?
If you can speak, you're on the phone as well, if you can question. If Lawrence, if you can get to me about, I can also field questions if you can.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Okay, is there a motion on ordinance forty-three ninety-three?
Mr. Mayor, I can, if you have a public hearing.
Okay, I'm sorry. I'd like to declare a public hearing on ordinance forty-three ninety-three, open at this time. If you'd like to speak to it, please come forward, state your name and address for the record, and please limit your comments to three minutes or less. I declare a public hearing closed. Is there a motion on ordinance forty-three ninety-three?
Mr. Mayor, I can, I'll make a motion to pass ordinance forty-three ninety-three.
Okay, motion is seconded. Is there any discussion at this time? Hearing none, all those in favor of ordinance forty-three ninety-three, please designate. Aye. Aye. All those opposed, nay. There is no opposition. Ordinance passes. Okay, Mr. City Manager, item seven, please.
Sir, we have ordinance forty-three ninety-four. This is an ordinance amending and restating certain provisions of chapter fifty-eight, article four of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Hartsville, South Carolina, permit consumption of alcohol, beverages, and public spaces within a defined area and other matters where they do too.
Okay, thank you. At this time, I declare a public hearing open on ordinance forty-three ninety-four. If anyone would like to speak to this, please come forward, state your name and address for the record, and limit your comments to three minutes or less. I declare a public hearing closed. Is there a motion on ordinance forty-three ninety-four?
Mr. Mayor, Protown, I'll make a motion if we pass ordinance forty-three ninety-four.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Any discussion at this time? No discussion? All those in favor of ordinance forty-three ninety-four, please signify by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed, nay. The House have it, there is no opposition. Mr. City Manager, number eight, please.
Yes, sir, ordinance number forty-three ninety-five, to annex an approximately five-point-eight-three-eight plus or minus acres of parcel of land, tax map number zero-three-six-zero-zero-one-zero-seven-zero, located on Bay Road into the city limits of parcel.
Okay. I declare a public hearing open, ordinance forty-three ninety-five. If you'd like to speak to this ordinance, please come forward, state your name and address for the record, and limit your comments to three minutes or less. I see a couple of school district employees back there, but I'm sure they're in favor of this. Hearing none, I declare the public hearing closed. Is there a motion on ordinance forty-three ninety-five?
Mr. Mayor Protown, I have a motion that we pass ordinance forty-three ninety-five.
Second.
Okay, motion is seconded, any discussion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor Protown, please tell me the proximity to, this is by the new school, I'm assuming.
I think this is the one that makes it connect to the new school, is that correct, Dr. Newman?
Is it okay for me to speak?
Yes, sir.
This is across the street from Bay Road, from the building, so it, the new road that will go across to the assisted living center, that's where this property is. So you've got Bay Road and the school, right, the school on one side of Bay Road, on the other side of the Bay Road is this five-point plus acres where the road will connect to the assisted living.
So it connects the assisted living center to, gives continuity to the-
Contiguous to-
Rock City.
Yes.
Yesterday.
That's right.
It is contiguous, this piece is contiguous by the assisted living center. Okay, any other comments? Hearing none, all those in favor of ordinance forty-three ninety-five, please signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, nay. There is no opposition. Ordinance forty-three ninety-five passes. Item nine, city manager.
Mr. Chairman, ordinance forty-three ninety-six is to annex an approximately forty-two-point-eight-seven plus or minus acre parcel of land, tax map number zero-three-six-zero-zero-zero-one-zero-one-five, located on Bay Road into the city limits of parcel.
Okay. At this time, I declare the public hearing open on ordinance forty-three ninety-six. Anyone would like to speak to this ordinance, please come forward, state your name and address for the record, and limit your comments to three minutes or less. Hearing none, I declare the public hearing closed. Is there a motion on ordinance forty-three ninety-six?
Remove.
Standing.
Okay, motion is seconded, any discussion at this time? I will ask Dr. Newman, what's the progress of the new school? And I paid real close attention to the school board meeting yesterday, and had almost a thousand hits at one time, I'm kind of jealous, but anyway.
So we, we are still on schedule with the new school. The, the actual, the extra time that we're having before we start school will help us with the connection road. As you know, there'll be the connection road, which will be primarily used for buses in the morning and the afternoons. There'll be a red light at one fifty-one at the assisted living that also the hospital will benefit from as well, for their employee traffic in the mornings. So it gives us a little bit more time cushion. We, we were pushed, but we were on schedule. We actually got occupancy for adults in the building this week, and we expect occupancy for kids once the parking lot and the connecting drives are paved.
I know these are unusual times, is there any plans for an open house for the public to do this?
Virtually, yes.
Virtually, right.
Virtually right now, but obviously, we're watching very closely the science that's going on at this point in time, and once we're able to, plan is to have people in the building.
Okay, thank you so much. Madam President, we, motion is seconded.
Yes, sir.
Okay. All in favor of ordinance forty-three ninety-six, please signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, nay. There is no opposition. Ordinance forty-three ninety-six passes. Under new business, item number ten, resolution oh-seven twenty oh-one. Mr. City Manager.
Yes, sir, it's approval for Hartsville Police Department to enter into a memorandum of understanding of federal view of investigation for the P D violent crime Safe Streets Task Force.
Okay. Is there a motion on resolution oh-seven twenty oh-one?
Mayor, I recommend we, resolution oh-seven twenty oh-one, second.
Okay, motion made, made and seconded, any discussion?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Mayor Protown, is this an addition to what's already being done?
This is actually, it's an update to the M O U that we already have in place. It essentially updates two previous M O U's that were in place already. So it's, there's a P D Safe Streets Task Force, and then the P D Violent Crime Safe Streets Task Force as well, so I think this is being consolidated.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Mac. Any other discussion, question? Okay. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, nay. There is no opposition. Resolution oh-seven twenty oh-one passes. Item eleven, please, Mr. City Manager.
Yes, sir, it's ordinance number forty-three ninety-eight, it's to lease a portion of tax map number zero-five-six-zero-six-zero-two-zero-eight-seven, located at one-fourteen South Fourth Street to retrofit sixth and seventh.
Okay. Is there a motion on forty-three ninety-eight?
Remove.
Is there a second? Okay, motion is seconded, any discussion?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor Protown, please again, give me a process in the field, if I were able to determine which side of the depot building is the song.
Is this behind it?
This is behind it, on the parking lot side of where the new retro sixth and seventh will be. This was essentially, it was an air by the G I S department at the county, I believe, or just through some sort of deep air, and a sliver of land was not actually incorporated to that original property. So the city still retains ownership of a small sliver that actually connects the curb line to parking lot, to the building. It's, has no value to the city, so in order to make it a cleaner transaction for it now, we've decided to lease it to the building, since they already started building on it, and to clean up some of the area. But it's a, essentially a sliver of land has no value to the city.
What kind of lease are we doing, for how long?
Uh, the lease is going to be five dollars annually for an annual lease, similar to the leases that we do.
They can't do anything else with the property?
No, no, sir, it is-
You've got a call back in there, whatever.
No, I mean, the property, it should have been included on the property, when they bought it. It's for access, essentially, only, and there are media requirements to it.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? Okay, all those in favor of ordinance forty-three ninety-eight, please signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, nay. There is no opposition. Ordinance forty-three ninety-eight passes. Item number twelve, Mr. City Manager.
Yes, sir, it's ordinance number forty-three ninety-nine, is to lease property at two-thirty-one West Carolina Avenue to the Darlington County Democratic Party.
Okay. Is there a motion on ordinance forty-three ninety-nine?
Remove. Sir.
Okay. And motion is seconded, any discussion? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor of ordinance forty-three ninety-nine, please signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, nay. There is no opposition. Ordinance forty-three ninety-nine passes. Council, I'll direct your attention to our calendars and other items in our packet. At this time, if there's some other business, is there a motion to return?
Remove.
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Motion taken. Thank you everyone for coming.